I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 25th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Solfa. Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
Seron.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
That's 13.
Next is item two, which is a reminder to speak directly into the microphone if you come up to the podium to address us. Item three, is anything to be removed, added, or changed this evening, anything?
No.
Nothing?
Still for zero.
Okay. All right. Solfa has arrived. We have all 14. And then item four would be matters from the public for items not on our agenda this evening. Is there anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
The consent agenda reads as follows. For approval, the Cow executive session minutes from February 25th, 2025, and personnel. Resolution 2025-46-R, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate at real estate west of 122 South Van Buren Street. Ordinance 2025-19, amending city code relating to construction of utility facilities and rights-of-way. Resolution 2025-47-R, authorizing the purchase of a digital backup and recovery system. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion by Beck, second by Solfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then item six, which is ordinance 25-2025-22, amending the text of the zoning code for chapter 2.6 for ambulance service.
Good evening, all. This item before you tonight is 2025-022, which would amend the text of the zoning code relative to ambulance services in the employment districts, particularly in the SBE Service Business District, the LI Light Industrial, and GI General Industrial District. Scott Morkin, Morkin Associates, whose firm represents a number of properties in the industrial park, has proposed or requested the draft changes and particularly would facilitate a particular tenant looking to occupy a space at 1183 Pearson Drive. But as a text amendment, it would apply to all properties within those industrial districts. The change would basically divide out the use into two categories based on the occupancy size at 3,500 square feet. And what would be proposed is that anything 3,500 square feet or less would be a permitted use in the LI and GI district, and that anything greater than 3,500 square feet would be a conditional use in those districts. The Plan Commission, at the Plan Commission meeting, Mr. Morkin explained the rationale for the change. The Commission was mostly focused on the removal of the use from the SBE Service Business District, which staff did note was part of that original categorization was that, or part of the suggestion of the removal, was that with the SBE district, that is a more transitional district in our community where it's been placed. So it was felt that due to some potential conflicts in terms of noise and scale of the use, particularly with larger fleets, that would probably not be the most appropriate use. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the ordinance before you tonight, and staff does recommend approval as presented. And I should note, Mr. Morkin is here to answer any questions if the council has any.
Does anybody have any questions?
So I guess just for clarification, this is just like, would be an office and a garage that they would use for basing the service out of, right? Like transfer ambulance? So typically, for most ambulance services, they're not dispatching directly from the location. Usually they're contractually working with somebody where they may be, you know, going to either a fixed location each day or reporting to different locations, but usually they're not going directly like to a response, and that was brought up during the discussion with the Plan Commission. And for the most part, most of these ambulance services, yes, are offices with, you know, we have a number of facilities that would have like office, a warehouse, or garage bay, or multiple bays. And so that would be what would be facilitated with this.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, if not, look for a motion to recommend a council ordinance 2025-22, amending the text to the zoning code for chapter 2.6 for ambulance service. Move.
Second.
You. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. All right, and then item seven is ordinance 2025-21, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing sale. Who's got that? Gary?
A couple of weeks back, you'll recall that we were here to talk about the state having chassis available for us to purchase for our heavy-duty dump trucks. This is the other side of that equation. This is actually declaring our old dump trucks surplus, so that they can then be sold at auction and disposed of. I just want to make two quick comments on this list. You'll notice that two of the dump trucks are 20 years old. Those trucks, we always have a couple in our fleet which go longer than typical. The other truck was 2010, so about 15 years old, which that's typical with the heavy dump trucks. But as I just said, we always have a couple in our fleet that go longer because those have been outfitted for a special purpose. For example, truck number 38 has been used for the last several years with our DuraPatch trailer, which is just a pothole patching trailer, and it has to have a, the tailgate on it has to be modified to work specifically with that trailer. So that truck stays in our fleet for a little longer. Now we'll be modifying a new truck's tailgate to serve that purpose. So just wanted to bring that up, that we try to get every ounce of use out of these trucks. And then the other one is 2007 Dodge Dakota pickup. That one has been replaced this year with the new Ford Maverick Hybrid pickup. So along council's desire to electrify our fleet. So that's all I really have on this. The rest of it is just routine surpassing of the Corvette.
Questions? So is the trailer, is that the last pre-2000?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but we have several old trailers. So yeah, to have the trailers be this old is not unusual, and they're perfectly fine. Yeah, that's why we use them this long.
Motion to recommend a council ordinance 2025-21, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing sale. No moves?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, move on to item eight, which is resolution 2025-048-R, authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract for the 25 to 29 janitorial services for the City of Batavia facilities with Bravo Services Incorporated of Mount Prospect, Illinois.
If you recall, we actually had brought this issue to you in late 2024 with a recommended bid, and then subsequently a contract award, and that was then later terminated with that contractor. And so we had to go back to the bids that were received in November, and we are now coming forward with you, to you, with a recommendation to proceed forward with Bravo Services. They have met all the criteria. If you recall, the contractor that we originally had awarded to did not meet all of the city's criteria, which was learned after the award process. So Bravo Services has met all the city's criteria, and we are recommending to move forward with them with a one-year renewable, which means that every year it's reevaluated and up to potentially five years of services with Bravo Services.
Questions? So what do we do in the interim? I mean, does just nothing happen, or?
The company that we've had for the last five years has helped us by staying on.
So, okay, so we're covered.
They've been very good.
Okay. And then I look for a motion to recommend a council resolution 2025-48-R, authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract for the 25 to 29 janitorial services for the City of Batavia facilities with Bravo Services Incorporated. Move.
Second.
Motion by you, or second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good for them, was real good.
Yeah. All right, then we move on to item number nine, which is a discussion on the update of the surveillance camera project.
Good evening, all. I don't have a ton to update. The installation is ongoing. Nothing's been made live yet. You probably will have seen a few boxes on light poles throughout downtown. Those are the electrical boxes, so our electric crews can go and do the hookups for those in anticipation that eventually Syntel will come around and actually install the cameras and radio equipment on them. We completed the wiring and installation at fire stations one and two. We are currently, this week, they're out at the substations doing those installations as well. Like I've said, nothing's been cut live yet. We're working on some signage for when they do go live that we'll put in the downtown and some other areas to let people know that these areas would be under surveillance. And really, we're happy to answer any questions or answer any concerns you may have.
I had one question posed to me just out of the blue. Somebody asked about what would happen if somebody vandalizes these? How does, is that go just typical like any public property? Or is it a different charge or different level or something?
Probably be on camera.
Yeah. I mean, I just, it was just proposed to me, you know, how would that be handled?
It's a government-owned camera system, so it would just be, there's an enhanced defense for damage to government property, but it would still be a criminal damage to property investigation.
That was just, you know, that was a question that I got, and I had no idea what we would do, you know, if it was just, as it would be any other part of property that we had.
You have technology built into the camera that are both tamper-proof, or like if somebody hits it with a bat or whatever, it alerts to that. And it's back, and then obviously it tries to capture an image right beforehand.
Yeah, okay. Leah?
Back in December, I think is when we last had discussions about this. And I think at that time, we were, like, the policy was still being written. Is that where we're still at with all of that? Maybe you should stay up here.
So we have a draft policy. It is ready to launch. It has not been launched yet. It's to, will go live with, to coincide with the system being, going live as well.
Is that something we will be able to review and have?
I'm happy to share a copy with you if you'd like to review it.
Yeah. I was reviewing the meetings back in December, and I know at that time, we were discussing back with Chief Mazza. But there was some questions about if it was going to be in the policy, about who would be accessing the cameras and when and why. And I, that was never really clarified, even as we were, as I went back and watched those meetings again. And it's still something that's, I would like to know before this goes live. Like who on city staff gets to have access to both the live feed, but then whenever they want to, the recorded, you know, access? And can they just access it whenever they want? Do they have to have reason? Do they need to, does it need to be in a log? Who they are, when they did it, why they did it? And that, I would love answers to all of those.
So yeah, anybody accessing the system would have to be able to explain and articulate a good reason for accessing the system. The system does, in and of itself, log access, should be able to record who accessed it, what viewable portion of video and camera feeds that they would have accessed at that time. So that should all be recorded, something that would be subject to review.
What about that policy? Do we have a policy on who could request that? If somebody from the public wanted it, or would it be foible? How it, is it just?
It's subject to FOIA.
Standard FOIA?
Yes.
That's how they would get, okay.
And then along those lines, I guess, so Max was saying the cameras have already been installed at the fire stations, and now at the subs, and they're currently being at the substation. Are these just like external? Are these in workspaces? Are these where people?
Nothing in workspaces. And so the areas that are covered, it's the external of the building and the apparatus bay. That is it. So no private areas or anything else like that. They're not live at this time, so nothing's recording yet. But yeah, that's, that's the intended areas, is really just where there's equipment and the outside. No, nothing in the building, nothing beyond really the lobby of the building is, no, no private workspaces, no kitchen, bathrooms, bunk spaces, anything like that at all.
But it is the garage bay workspace where they're at.
In the apparatus bay, yes.
In the apparatus bay. Okay. Oh, because it is like directly, because I don't know, do we have, other than inside the police department, do we have active security cameras inside other workspaces around government buildings?
There are cameras in the hallways. They've been here for many, as long as I've been here. There are cameras in the hallways and certain other areas throughout the facility, yes.
Which allows the police department to monitor the unoccupied areas during non-working times? In City Hall? Yeah. What about other, like, private lockdown buildings we have in? Gary?
Oh, I was just going to say, Public Works has had cameras within our, with our building interiors going back to 2009, 2010.
Do we have policies on all of those cameras? Like, again, who can access the video feed? And I'm just thinking now, it hadn't come up before we did these additional surveillance cameras. They were, there as a means of, you know, protect, property protection.
One of the things that we're going to be working on as well, before we cut live to anything, is who has access to what? And that will be basically the least access that we need to allow. So we'll have a full roster of staff who have access to what resources, what cameras, and all that. And the system logs everything that anyone does. Any click, any movement of the mouse, to the extent that anyone is reviewing footage. It's logging exactly what they're viewing, what areas of the exact footage they're able to see. So there is extensive tracking of, you know, all that data. And then one of the other things that I think you had put in the policy is an annual review of the system, any benefits, any problems that come up, and all of that as well.
Thank you. I was going to ask that about the annual review and just making sure that happens. And then we can discuss what's working well, what do we need to change? Just because I know we're trying to balance between these systems, which, you know, provide some safety and security, but then also the privacy of our workspaces and our staff, employees of the city. And I think that's just valuable to really think about.
Wendy were here, she would be, you know, the expert who could address, you know, the employers have an interest in being able to monitor the public areas of a workspace, but they, they do not have the right to monitor the area where an individual employee is performing their work.
So then how would that work in like the fire department in the, within the garage?
We probably wouldn't have a camera at their, the kitchen table in the area where they were watching televisions, nor in the rooms where they're sleeping and the type of quarters areas. But the apparatus floor that contains millions of dollars of equipment, that is a space where the employer would have a right to put cameras so that they could monitor and make sure that area was secure. And if there was an incident of damage or theft, they would have the ability to investigate it using that footage. Gary?
So similar for Public Works, we have a camera in the warehouse, but not in the warehouse office. We have a camera out in the garage, but not in like the individual office spaces. And we have a camera like in the front lobby, which is open to the public. But again, not in the office space.
Yeah. Maybe a question for Wendy, but do any of our collective bargaining agreements have language on video surveillance?
Not to my knowledge, but it is a question for Wendy that I'll ask.
Mark?
As the policy is finalized, unless I can be convinced of another good reason, should it not be that the only reason you would access footage is for an active investigation? Is that going to be in the policy? And is there a reason that it wouldn't be only for an active investigation?
Active investigation would be one compelling reason to be accessing the video surveillance footage, but I can think of other public safety benefits to supplement resources, to monitor large-scale events where there is a risk or public safety concerns. There would certainly be other times that, in my estimation, would be appropriate.
I guess I'm saying for recordings.
For recordings?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only reason that we would duplicate footage is if there was evidentiary value related to a criminal investigation.
Is that going to be in the policy? That you have to like put in, this is the case associated with?
Any video surveillance footage that is duplicated is put in and follows the evidentiary procedures of our department.
We seem all that uncommon. I go in buildings downtown all the time, or our office building downtown. You walk in and the front desk has a dozen monitors with cameras monitoring everywhere. You can look back there and you can see all the different places they're monitoring. I mean, this is not some type of a new concept. We're talking here about having cameras in hallways and foyers and, you know, public places. I mean, this is extremely common.
Yeah, I mean, I would say yes, very common, but I think Leah brings up some good points. And, you know, with me doing what I do, I don't hear that very often. So, you know, refreshing to kind of hear that. And there's some things that can be done, both from a video management software platform, as well as some of the capabilities of the camera. But if we give the opportunity to our employees, our staff, whatever, to say, hey, you know, I really don't want this area, and I wouldn't mind if I saw the view that that camera sees, you know? And then if they see that and they go, you know, I'd really not like you have my, my file cabinet there, you know, or whatever it might be, you can do a mask out, and there's ways to kind of one-off, you know, help whatever situation it might be. So, but giving the people the benefit of the doubt, to be able to see that and give that opportunity, you don't hear about that. You usually just have scared employees going, who's watching over me? So, I mean, it's, it's good.
That is one of the final steps, is the specific views of the camera. They will actually tweak like where it's pointing and what it's covering. So those will be some of the final considerations to ensure that it's not covering areas that are more private or things like that. So really, like in the apparatus bay, we're talking like?
People say that all the time. If we actually give people the opportunity, like, hey, you want to see it? And, you know, it's all app-based. You can look at it on an iPad, you know? And hey, here's what that camera's going to be seeing. Is everything cool? And then, you know, I think we got a lot of happy people, and not necessarily people who are scared of the cameras.
Yeah, I just want us to be as transparent as possible, both to the public, to residents, like, why do we have cameras all over town? And to the city staff and employees, like, we're not doing this to babysit you, you know? And like that, we, like, it's, it's safety for protecting our assets, like our assets, like our vehicles and our trucks and all of those things. But that's going to be a very fine line we're walking. And so we just need to be open to those discussions and?
So the cameras are not new for employees. In all of these facilities, they've been here for more than a decade. And the employees actually use those here. For, here's an instance, like, we had a problem with the garage door in the warehouse, and they're able to get onto their phone and say, you know, I just want to make sure, double-check that that door isn't open there, and they utilize them. So it's, it's very wide and openly known to people. And the cameras in the hallways are not small or anything. You can see that there's a camera there. So there's no, you know, it has, up to this point, it has not been an employee issue.
The new cameras we're installing with this policy, is this separate from all the current cameras we have?
It'll be brought into the same video management system.
It will be, or it will be?
Will be.
It will be.
So everything that's existing is going to be eventually brought into our new video server, video management system. So it's one system across all of our devices. So, you know, that camera you see up there, it's going to be plugged in in the back end of the server room to the video networking system. So yeah, it'll be one system. And then kind of to Laura's point, you know, someone in Public Works would only have access to Public Works cameras. There's no need for them to have access, per se, to the detention area or City Hall. And so those are some of the conversations we'll have as we work through the list of who should have access, what specific cameras they should have access to, and all those sorts of things.
I can see just from a logistics standpoint, it'll be nice if somebody at Public Works could come in, and as they're trying to plan out a schedule for snow plowing, they can go out and they can look and say, okay, this side of town got hit worse than the other side. We can find that out in five minutes with a camera, not half an hour in a truck trying to figure out where to send them.
As a matter of fact, last year, we installed cameras in several locations throughout our town that are aimed at the ground in order to monitor conditions to do just that.
And I think that's a great use of technology to be able to utilize it for that.
I actually had to clear that up with a resident recently, who was like, I saw a camera going up on Western, or on Western. And I was like, pretty sure that's just a weather camera, you know, that's not.
I responded to that resident.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure my notes were clear. When we're talking about a policy for these cameras, this is a staff-level policy that you are setting, that we are not approving, but we will have an opportunity to review annually?
Absolutely, okay. I mean, it's a staff-level policy that we put in place. We're happy to have your input on the policy as well. And if there are aspects of it that you'd like us to change, let's have a discussion about it. And just, you know, but ultimately, you're the decision-makers.
We just don't want to have any problems with it, you know, for anybody. I think that's the biggest thing, is, is we want to make sure that it doesn't create any problems.
Any else? Okay, let us know when it's live.
If you have any questions or want to know status update, just reach out to me, and I'll get you whatever you want.
What's our timeline?
Probably late April, early May, give or take.
Done?
Likely. We're, they're moving very quickly, which we're happy with. Steve's team has been moving very quickly with the electric side as well. So really, our goal is pre-festival season, because that's part of the reason is to have these.
We sticking with milestone, or did we move to another?
We're using access camera station.
Access camera station.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to number 10, project status. Laura?
Okay, just a few things here. Use these glasses. As you know, we made several changes to the, our liquor code. And the motivation behind that was to try to simplify things from the user's standpoint. And sometimes there are unintentional consequences in the Park District. It seems like we made things more difficult for them instead of making it easier for them. So we met with them last week, and we're going to bring some tweaks back to you at the next committee of the whole meeting. Some changes, because it was not our intent to complicate the process for them. And as we know, they've been really great about communicating with us with regard to events where they do have liquor service. So we'll bring those changes back to you. With regard to the single-use bag vendors, Max and I met with Craig Schneider a couple of weeks ago and talked about, you know, some ideas about what his program would look like. We're in the process of putting together a service agreement with him that will incorporate our typical terms and conditions, but then also lay out the various, the scope of the project that he will do. With regard to the education campaign vendors, we had hoped that they'd come out with a way to kind of partner with one another. But, you know, I can't really force two private parties to work together on a project. So we gave the lead to Vicarious, but because of the other vendor's exceptional job that they do with video, we're hoping to be able to actually work with both vendors because Vicarious will come up with the multi-channel communication plan. But we think that Gary can create some exceptional content for us. Does anybody have any questions about that? I wanted to thank Steve Allen from the electric utility. Steve coordinated citywide training for our first responders and for our building inspection professionals, and for anyone else on live line training, because any of those individuals could come upon a scene where there was live electricity. And I have heard from many of the employees who attended that half-day training that it was extremely valuable, and they have a whole new respect. it was extremely valuable and they have a whole new respect for electricity. Also, the safe routes to school, we had the pre-con meeting with the contractor there and that is to add street, add sidewalks to Republic, Webster and Blaine Street. And we expect that that is going to get underway in early May, that construction. We also had an initial meeting with IDOT with regard to the phase two of the road diet on Route 31. IDOT has many, many projects that they have under review and so they are trying to manage our expectations. It's likely not going to be until 2027 that we're doing the actual construction that is related to that second phase of Route 31. And I think that's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Oh, Mark, I was going to update on the feasibility study for the Whitewater. And we are trying to set up a meeting with our engine, the engineering firm, one of the ones that we've worked with in the past, who is one of the responders to the RFP, to kind of get an idea of how we could revise the scope to match our budget. Because what came back, the way that we wrote the RFP, the responses came back with a lot of engineering work that made it a lot more expensive than what we had budgeted for. So we're working to get that revised and back to you.
Nick?
Question. And I may have missed this a while back. There was a development proposed on Shumway. What ever happened with that?
You know, unfortunately, the, it just, the ask became 30% of the project, that the city would invest 30% of the cost of the project. And that just seems kind of out of line with, you know, responsible investment on the part of the city. We, you know, it's a high level of risk for us to put so many eggs in one basket. I think the issue there is that due to the size of the project, it wasn't generating enough revenue in order to give the market rate of a return that would ordinarily be expected, but it was missing it by a long shot.
And we went to a TIF consultant, didn't we?
Yes, we sure did.
Did you?
Yes, yeah, we had, we had, Ryan is our financial advisor that does the analysis for that.
So was it discussed afterwards or did I miss it? Was this something we all talked about or?
No, it wasn't something that I brought back to you. I, yeah. So if you think that no matter what people ask, that we should have a public discussion about it, I'm happy to do that, but it just, 30, having a city invest 30% of the development costs for a mixed-use development.
I remember it being exorbitant, but I didn't know if there was any negotiating.
There was not a public discussion of it.
Should have, I think.
What's that?
We probably should do that because we, I mean, full disclosure, we need to get a development going. We needed something. We need a project to start in this town because it's, I just find it crazy that there hasn't been one in the two years I've been on council. You know, we got River Street going, we got COVID kind of like helped us, I hate to say that. And now I feel like we're left holding the bag and we got, we, we need to entice someone somehow to get over here and present a project to us. But when we're, when we only have a few to choose from, we need to make that decision as a group, whether that's good for the city or not, which I appreciate your guys' opinion, but that's got to be brought to us. I mean, that's a no-brainer to me.
So just in, in response to that, I think that we will see, and we have had people kind of come in and test the waters and say, you know, now that I've seen your downtown plan and you've identified catalyst sites within your downtown, we are getting some interest and I hope that I could have something. But a lot of times developers don't want to come in without a fully baked plan to pitch to a group because it's sort of revealing to their competitors.
I want them to pitch it to us. I need, we need you guys to assimilate what you're talking to them about and, and just bring that info to us. They don't need to put their presentation together until they're ready, but we got to know what's going on so that.
As to what types of things would you like to know?
If a developer comes to our city right now, in my opinion, this council should know about it.
Okay, so if we have public discussions about every time a developer contacts us, they won't contact.
Because we're losing a lot of them.
No, 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 they'll go away.
We got no winners.
Because they don't want it publicly disclosed.
Laura, I deal with developers all day, all, all the time. I know many of them personally. I mean, we have to entice these people.
And they're telling you that they want it publicly discussed whenever they're contacting the city about the project.
I didn't say that. I said that as an alderman in this town right now, something like that. I don't care if it's executive session or however that gets brought up.
That's not allowed to be discussed in executive session.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
That's something that towns really get in trouble for.
We need more intel, please. Okay, thank you.
All right. One of the feedback that we get from the banks that are looking to finance it and why there's this shortfall has to do with, so for instance, on Shumway, that is not a high traffic street and we do not have a train station in our downtown. These are two things that I hear over and over again. So if we could get a project going that's on a busier street with a higher traffic volume, that is feedback that we get. Robin?
First of all, I completely agree with Tim. I'm stunned that we haven't had anybody come with a really serious development proposal for our downtown in the last couple of years. But my initial question was, you said they were asking for 30%. I do not recall off the top of my head about what was the budget for that project? Was it 50 million?
Forty, 45 million?
Okay. Okay.
Is that?
But I think I'm glad that Nick brought that up tonight. The other thing I wanted to say, whatever channel is appropriate to do it in, it would be good to know that that's what they're asking for and that's why we can't do it. Because we would not have known that if Nick hadn't brought that up tonight, so.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing as Robin. I guess I've just kind of been sitting here thinking like, okay, they're just working on stuff behind the scenes, it's going to come. Because the development company came to us multiple times with an actual project, with actual numbers. And what we were told was stuff was being worked on behind the scenes and we'd get an update. So, thank you, Nick, should have brought it up much sooner. So, this is surprising. And so having, especially when something has been fully presented to us, we need updates on those, okay? Even if it gets dropped. But I would prefer for it to first be a discussion about why, the reason that the city would like to drop the project.
Just as an insight here, as all you know, I serve as chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayors, which is downtown in the old post office. And my staff down there is scared to death about what's happening with both Washington and Springfield. That the idea that you could go and get federal grants or state grants or anything, kind of the word is out, don't, don't promote it because we probably can't get it. And we've had some situations here where people have asked for money and we, we think we're getting it, but we don't have it yet in our hands. And so, I mean, it's kind of a tenuous time right now to, to put too much out there and say we're going to build something or want to do something because, you know, unless we are going to go to our taxpayers or our budget and find the money to do something, it may be a rough road right at the moment. No pun intended, but that's what it is. And everybody's, you know, in the, in the distribution world is very cautious about, some of them are worried they may not even have a job themselves to make those decisions the way some of this stuff has come down here recently. So this is probably maybe one of the worst times I ever remember, you know, sitting here talking about any kind of development because there's a real fear in the, in the world at both the state and federal levels. And I could, I don't want to talk publicly about some of the things that are being said, but it's, it's not a real positive time at this moment.
I can appreciate that for projects that need federal or state funding, but I'm talking about enticing private folks to talk to us. Somehow, some way, we get creative, we, I can sit in a room with folks and start spitballing ideas, but we need movement somehow, some way. I mean, I've only had like two things brought to council since I've been on that are somewhat exciting and they both fizzled out. I mean, this one, we didn't even, when did it die?
Months ago.
Okay, so, and what have we done in the meantime in that space? What?
I think one of the things that.
From a marketing perspective.
That we need to do is, yes, we need to think about marketing the, the properties that we do have available, whether we control them or not.
Are we going to networking events? Are we going like?
So I can tell you what has happened in the past when we did an RFP for projects for city-owned property and we sent it out to 31 of the largest developers in Chicago and we got one unviable.
How did that, how did it get sent? Just here, we have all these properties, what would you do with them?
It was a request for proposal and so it, it makes the pitch for, you know, these are properties and this is the way that we would like to see them developed and so unfortunately we didn't have the interest.
That's why we need to have, this, I hate to say, but we're selling our city. Like, we, we need to sell Batavia better, in my opinion. There should be buzz around here. It seems like Batavians and, you know, Fox Valley people are the only ones who know about it. It's like, where are all these people that are building everywhere else where I'm doing projects? Like, we need them here, you know? And again, that's not my job, but I know there's events, I know there's ways to stir up, there are ways for cities to stir up business. I mean, there's incentive, incentives that can be put in place in front of people and whether that's monetary or whether that's skirt, whatever, there's different ways that it can be done, but I don't know if we're getting creative. I mean, kind of to Alderman Malone's point, and I see your hand up now, so I'll let you talk, but, you know, we've, we've put signs up, ads in papers, RFPs with bad responses, we need to change, right? Try something different? So, I mean, that's, I guess, I don't know. I mean, this one caught me off guard.
Yeah, and I, I think, kind of to build on that, one thing that would be helpful for me and I, I think it sounds like might be helpful for some other folks is I think I need some insights into what the RFP process looks like, right? I think I need to know, you know, you say we put out an RFP, are we putting on, you know, UserNet? Are we putting, you know, I, I think that's kind of a joke, but I think it would be useful for me just to know what that looks like. What doesn't, when you say put out an RFP, what does that literally mean, right? That would be helpful. I think I kind of agree with, it's kind of bizarre, you know, that we haven't seen more development in this town. This town's wonderful, we all love it, we all want to sell it. I think we all believe in this town. That's something different and I think we need to get focused on that. I think you're absolutely right. We need to like get focused and serious and find a way to make this happen. I think that's a little separate from some of the ire that I'm sensing at the moment. I feel, and I think what I've heard from other folks, I feel a little blindsided that this project didn't come through. And I just found out about it because Nick brought it up. And that transparency is, I'd like more of that, right? I'd like to know a little bit earlier on, you know, 30% of the project, I think I recall, I don't know, I won't say what I recall, but it felt like a lot at the time. I remember not being pleased with, with that number, but I feel like that decision was then taken away from me on the council. And by me, I mean us, right? And I think that's where some of our anger's coming from, is that it was kind of taken away from us. So if we can find a way, whether that's public comment, whether that's executive, I don't know what the correct answer here is because I understand the negotiation side of it, but we also need to keep sort of the public decision-making side of it alive and well. And we're the public decision-makers.
I'm glad that you mentioned negotiation because negotiation for incentives for a development project are not something that you can do in executive session, so.
We need to find a way to.
A little limiting.
No.
But go ahead.
Under the city staff, I'm off, you know, saying incentivize. We don't need to, I mean, we can come up with ideas, I guess, in this group, but yeah, exactly.
Those are the conversations that we have.
So how are we incentivizing? How are we?
Utilizing TIF funding. That is the reason why we established our TIFs are twofold.
Our money is useless to people? Like, I don't understand, this town is awesome. Why are we, why doesn't a guy come in here or a gal want to build?
Banks. The answer to that question is banks and banks finance projects. And banks take a look at a set of criteria about where you are going to build a development and they say, do we see this apartment building being able to be 100% occupied and generating revenue to cover the investment that they're making in the project? And that's up to this point where things have fallen apart. Alderman, keeper?
Thank you. This might be more on council side, but it seems like we might have need to actually create like a focus study group here to really dig into what these limitations are. Like, I know financing is a big part of it, I don't know what the specifics now, I'd love to review that. I think that would help us inform better policymaking decisions to know what the challenges we're facing are because right now I feel like it's a very notional idea. It's kind of financing, it's kind of like, you know, this or that work we're doing with them, like limitations that we might not even realize are there. So having that sort of, having a group come together. I'd also like to note that it's not only the big developments we should be looking at, but also making it easier for smaller developments or, yeah, anything, I agree with that.
Need to get the ball rolling so that others, come in.
When you say anything, I mean, are you just talking about in the downtown river area? Because there's develop, I mean, there's things that are, yeah, there's things that have been developed all over the place.
Well, that's, that's an existing business.
Net new.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
We have a lot of empty spaces.
Net new. New infrastructure, new, we need to start building buildings that we can eventually go vertical potentially one day.
We need to build them?
No, I'm saying, we need to see. Start, I mean, or.
Where?
It's a little bit like on Facebook, the people that are identifying what people should do with the tension.
Understood. But, but we are here talking to our city staff overseeing how we go to market as a town. Our go-to-market strategy isn't working. That's all I'm saying. If we can't even get our neighbors who own two, two, two down, and if that really was the bank and they came back and said, okay, you guys need to pay 30%, that 100% needs to be brought to us. We need to make that ultimate decision for the town. We have money here. We have ways to get around things. There's negotiation, there's, it just, I get, yeah, that needs to be, we need to market better. And no, we don't build the buildings, so.
Just one second, everything that I'm, that I'm hearing across the board, really like the idea of kind of a focus group, a study group to dive into it a little bit more. Because, yeah, something that was said, maybe we're not top 30 biggest developers in Chicagoland material. Like, maybe that's not who we should be targeting. Like, those factors of who we're reaching out to, what we're looking for and what else is out there. And maybe there's, when we look at smaller development, more incremental development, then we're not talking to the big banks anymore, we're talking to more regional players, players that take on a different, different risk style for different sized projects. And we just, like you said, get something going. So, yes, look forward to more conversations and figuring out what that looks like.
Robyn?
One thing I just thought of is, have we, and when we were developing our downtown development plan, you mentioned that there are, there's feedback and information that you guys have received about what banks are and are not, what types of sites and places they are not, are not willing to lend for development in. And so, using that knowledge, is that compatible with what we are, what we have in our plan and what we're marketing to developers? Because if we're saying, for example, Shumway is this catalyst redevelopment site, but we know that banks are not going to lend money to a developer to develop there, should we be marketing that? Should we be updating our downtown plan? Should we be using that information to really be targeting our marketing efforts to developers?
We definitely should be doing that and we have shifted our focus to areas that were also identified as catalyst sites that, based upon what we learned, you know, from the Shumway site, that that perhaps wasn't the first place that should get developed in our downtown and that maybe others are more salient because of what we learned.
That might be, I think that's general enough information that would be nice to have as an update. You know what? We kind of learned from our last experience. So really, these are kind of the places where we have more traffic or we have more like. we have more traffic or we have more likelihood of having higher rental capacity rates or whatever it is that the banks are looking at.
Over here, got a comment?
I have one more question, actually, unrelated. I meant to ask, chief, with all the recent craziness, speaking of national news, and with our brand-new beautiful store going in, is there any anticipation for recklessness at the new dealership? And are we preparing for that or kind of doing any?
We are preparing for it, yeah. Certainly a possibility. So, yeah, we're cognizant of what's going on nationally and regionally. We've reached out to some of our law enforcement partners that have similar structures and we are game planning.
And I had to that, I've had several mayors in the area call me because of what's happening out on Randall Road. And they wanted to know, had the city of Batavia adopted any type of a registration process or something that we know who's coming out there to demonstrate and whatever. And so I think we're kind of trying to look at that a little bit to figure out if there's something we could do. As it's been explained to me, the parking lot in front of that building is private property, so they can keep them off. Where they can demonstrate is probably along Mill Street. And the road in front of it that goes down to Portillo's, that's, I believe, that's privately owned, it's a privately owned road. So there's going to be, I think, I've had people call and ask, you know, where do we go find a permit to register to start to do some demonstration? So it wouldn't surprise me, within the next two or three weeks, we start to see something. The chief and I have talked about this several times in the last couple of weeks about what may be happening here, but I think we are a big target and I was, had an opportunity, Buffalo Grove had, already has a store up and they just had a terrible vandalism situation occur there. So we're all under warning and this, this may be another place we probably should put a camera or two up just to let everybody know, if you're going to go out there and do something crazy-
I'll be there.
You're going to be on, you're going to be on the camera.
All right. Any other comments? Any other questions? Abby?
We had a really great kickoff meeting right before this with the Brattle Group about the various energy studies that we're, that we're undertaking. And a key component for them getting started for both the integrated resource planning and the cost of service rate design is understanding what the city's objectives are so that they can design, you know, according to those objectives, which means as a council, we have to kind of articulate what those objectives are, what our priorities are, what our goals are, what our non-starters are, you know? Are we gonna, are we gonna go 100% coal in the future? Do we want to go into nuclear? Do we want to do 100% renewable? What are the priorities? What are the, the things that they're measuring to and that they're designing around? So I guess if somebody else, I don't know if I need a second on that because they need it for their studies, but.
I would, I think, after sitting in the back and listening to that tonight, I think we need to have an idea of, depending on certain scenarios, depending on whether we think we're going to add, you know, load to what we have, you know, electrification, you know, what, what the power source costs are, all those things that have to play into that. I think we have to be ready to make a policy decision at the council level as we move forward in that with the knowledge we get from the study, from the first one and future ones, that we are ready to say, okay, this is our policy and this is how that fits into the policy. Or how our policy is shaped by what's happening within our community. And because of the fact, we are the ones that have to make that decision, I think we need to have every piece of information we can before we make those decisions.
I was thinking you would want to have the research that Brattle Group is going to put together to inform the making of policy.
Part of the integrated resource, sorry, planning, it says which resource portfolio would meet the city's objectives and be the least cost option to the city. So if they're going to be providing us scenarios for different portfolios, how are they doing that if they don't know what our objectives are?
They're putting together the different scenarios based on what the future projected energy needs are and then, you know, it's going to be up to you to select among the various different scenarios. I mean, all options in terms of sources will be presented and you can, you would, you know, at that draft stage say, I don't even want to look at anything that says coal on it. So just go ahead and take all those scenarios out of there because we are not interested. But I just thought that in making the, setting the policy for it, it would be helpful to have all of this. They're asking for a tremendous amount of information from us, they're also looking to a myriad of different resources that exist out there in the world. And if it was me, I would want to have all that information before I set a policy.
Yeah, the, that's not the full understanding that I gathered from the meeting. It seemed like they were going to tailor what they were providing to us based on what they believed our objectives to be. And the, in the process, it was going to be iterative, right? So we sort of tell them, very generally, we're kind of aiming this way. They put some stuff together, then the next iteration, they pretty generally. So we do, from my perspective, need the baseline from the beginning of kind of what are we very generally aiming at? That allows them, that informs them of the full scope of what they're doing, then we get to add what we want. And then we, like, policy might be too heavy of a word, right? Maybe objectives might be kind of what I took away of them wanting. In the exchange I thought I heard, and I was out, I had to take a call, but I thought I heard sort of in that meeting, somebody say that, you know, we have some objectives written down somewhere already. I wasn't able to find those, but I was like 12 seconds of, of searching. So if we have any past guidance the council has put together, I think now is the time for us to then look into it, right? See, does that still make sense today? I don't know, probably not. The world is fundamentally different, energy-wise. So I do think front end, there's a really important role we need to play to make sure that we get the best possible outcome that then will reinform us, you know, come back around and fill us back in.
Wanted to throw in there too, on the front end, before we let them get into their scenario building, a key component of that will be residents getting to share what they are hoping and envisioning for Batavia's energy future and, you know, the, hearing from them, like, we just want the ability to go solar. I just want to put solar in my rooftop easily and cheaply and without any headaches. And if we hear that from 90% of the residents, then that's going to drastically change the infrastructure, the cost of service design. So I just want all of those nuances, all of those requests and all of the ability for residents to also participate in sharing that upfront before they get too far into the process.
And what I was going to say now, I know that what we've always talked about is diversity. So if, if I look at that, I want to see a diversified, where a diversified portfolio, where it takes into consideration numerous, unfortunately, I do feel like as we go along with this, and, and that may be the nice thing that we have, like this first round, we, you know, we'll put together something and we may not end up liking it, but in a couple of years, we're going to have to do it again and we'll be able to adjust for that. But for me, I know the goal going forward is to have diversity. And that's what I would be looking for, diversified. We're going to have coal for a while. I don't know what it's going to look like in years once that's closed down, what's available, but I don't want to be heavy on one thing and dependent on one thing.
Maybe the one thing we can agree on. Because really, truly, I see this, this is going to be constantly changing the next, probably the next 20 years.
And it's dependent on if they're going to get the nuclear power plants back up and going. I know they're opening one back up in Michigan, that's right over the lake that was closed down and they're opening that back up.
Data centers are taking all the power, though. They're not giving it up.
But when we get a data center here, they're going to use our power.
That's the other thing we have to market for, is a data center.
Just throw a nice one out in DeKalb, that's massive.
Well, I think that if our electric rates, and I think that's been our barrier, is the electric rates, I think if we are really showing where our rates are better than Nycor, then that's what we need to sell on at that point, make that the selling point.
Remember, we haven't raised our rates in a long time.
2015.
That might be the incentive, if they're going to use a lot of it.
Yeah, and I think this is just illustrating the use that we could have in sort of a dedicated conversation on front end, because I think Jen's bringing up some great points and it's back and forth, makes a whole lot of sense, doesn't it?
With the public out, you know, when the public, like Abby says, if the public comes in and says, okay, 50% of us are going to buy an electric car, that's a big deal for the electric utility. You know, if it's only 5 or 10%, that's probably something we can handle under normal circumstances. But if it becomes 50%, that's a huge deal. If 50% of our residences had solar on them, that would also be a huge deal for our infrastructure in our city.
And those are the types of things that I was talking about with regard to research because if we're going to rely on 20 people who come to a meeting out of 26,000 residents and base our policy on just that versus what Brattle Group is saying, this is how many EVs people are buying, really.
Right. And honestly, I think that's something that's easy to check. It's easy to find out by registrations. I'm sure there's some way, there's somebody in, in the state that has all the data that can give it to them.
Research isn't going to be bunk, I think.
No.
I think Gary said it right when he said, you know, if there is something unique that you think says Batavia part, absolutely bring it up. And I sat there and thought of it, I'm like, crap, what, you know, what do I got to bring to the table? Most of the details will probably be covered in their study, but.
Well, one concern that I have coming out of that meeting, and maybe it's my misunderstanding, it sounds like we as the city are handling the stakeholder outreach component of it. The, I used to do this work, you know, my job was, was doing stakeholder outreach and environmental issues in Denver and, you know, cities are great at a lot of things, but the sort of stakeholder outreach is sort of a very specific niche field. Takes wording surveys just right, it takes constructing focus groups sort of just right. It's pretty important that we have stakeholder engagement and stakeholders are residents, stakeholders are business owners, stakeholders are city council members, right? It's not just residents. So I think, if we're the ones taking it on and that's kind of what the Brattle folks said, and I think that was backed up by what was shared by staff, we need to be really intentional about it. We need to really make sure that we're doing the outreach the right way. You don't just ask, are you going to buy an EV? You ask it a couple of times in a couple of different ways to find out how serious they are about doing it. There's methodology behind this, this is a pretty serious undertaking. So if that's what we're doing, we need to make sure that we're doing it well. I was disappointed that-
It sounds like we should hire a, I'm sorry, it sounds like we should hire a consultant to do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was a little disappointed that Brattle weren't, wasn't taking that on. So I do think, I do think we need some, a professional stakeholder engagement process.
So that is not something that is currently in the budget, so it may require either a budget amendment or slowing down the project.
Based on what they're doing? Is that something that, or Kevin, are you looking at having that?
I mean, in an ideal world, if it were the perfect world that I could control, I mean, you'd have sort of stakeholder engagement right at the very front, right? To set the scope and kind of figure out, you know, inform what we're all talking about. Then you'd have it again, kind of at the backend. Right now, it looks like we're just having it, you know, backend is relative, of course, but kind of in, in sort of the, after the, the research has been done, right? You want stakeholder group to figure out what you're researching, but we're doing that, that's fine, that'll be okay. So I wouldn't be a, just my opinion, wouldn't be opposed to it, living where it is now in the timelines, but I do think it does need, if we're going to have it at that point, we, we have an extra responsibility to make sure that it's a robust, engaged process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that clarification.
And this was intended to be stakeholder outreach, so it isn't just happening after the fact. What we had today was intended to be stakeholder outreach and an opportunity for them to provide us with feedback.
Abby?
Kind of lost my train of thought there for a second. It had to do with the engagement and had to do with what you said. What did you say?
Remember what I said?
Oh, with the, yeah, the last point about what would be unique about Batavia and following trends and following regional trends and understanding where things are moving and that is all baked into the research. And no, I don't think that there's going to be too much unique about what Batavians are doing. I think there is something unique when we hear what Batavians want in the future and that's where we tailor our approach. Sure, the national averages that people are buying EVs at this rate, but we want to double that, we want to do this. And so bake that into these plans and our discussions about what we can do as a municipality to incentivize more EVs. What can we do as a municipality to incentivize or design around and make it easier to do X, Y, and Z based on this feedback and what we have control of at the local level and baking that in? So no, I'm not expecting, you know, our anecdotal, non-representative sample that engages in these stakeholder groups to give us the clear direction 100% where the country is moving or the city is moving, but I do think it's still important to inform how we, what, the questions we ask of these plans.
And even, we had some discussions today with Brattle as well, and I mean, we were asking questions about like, does our single-family homeownership different, is that different than the region as a whole? That might affect rooftop solar, that might affect EV adoption. How does income affect that? How does race? How does politics? Like, there's all these factors that we're kind of thinking about that Brattle is also going to attempt to quantify and see how that impacts local situations. So I'm excited about that as well, but these are kind of things that we're thinking through is, what are those unique characteristics? And they might be small, but they might be enough to make a difference.
I would say the one thing that makes us unique is that we're not by a train station. Really.
First out to get to Burlington, but it's a-
But somebody can't walk to the train station, somebody's got to take some motor transportation if they have to go downtown.
So I hear Jen say it's build a train.
Like a lot of places, though? I mean, I grew up 20 minutes from a train station, I just thought that was normal.
If we just look at our regional area, that's one thing that, you know, makes us unique. We've got Aurora south of us that's right there, we've got Geneva.
Bill too, I mean, I think we're in-
You know, and I look, I look at it and think, okay, if you built a building downtown, it's a three-minute walk to get to Wilson and get on a bus to go to the Geneva train station and you're there in five minutes. So, you know, to be able to use that as a sales technique for why downtown living in Batavia wouldn't require a car, if you worked in Chicago, you could get on the bus, be in Geneva, be on the train, you know?
And with more and more people having to go into the office, you're going to see a lot more people on Metro heading downtown for work.
And that's why they put the third rail in, so that they could keep that line moving.
But the funny part is, where some of us live, we drive to the train station, but when you get downtown, you're willing to walk that distance, the same distance. So that meant that, you think of those barriers along the way.
And alongside that, importance of having more regular bus service and having the development here that can support more regular bus service, they go hand in hand very much, would make, it's kind of a chicken and egg problem of, you have better bus service, you can support more development because the trains are more accessible, which then can drive better bus service because now you have more of a customer base for it. Getting that cycle going, that virtuous cycle is going to be a key of it.
Got lots of work to do. Okay, does anybody else have any others? If not, most per journement? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.